The regular school board meeting for independent school district eight thirty-three. It is Thursday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen at six-thirty. And we are at the district service center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. One point oh is our roll call.
Pat Driscoll.
Present.
Heather Hirsch is absent. Michelle Winnie.
Here.
Katie Schwartz.
Here.
Sharon Van Leer.
Here.
Ron Kat.
Here.
Tracy Burnett.
Here.
Maya Mera.
Here.
Hannah Poor.
Here.
Tracy Miller.
Here.
Thank you. Two point oh, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh is the approval of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sharon, second by Pat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Four point oh are district highlights. And this evening, we have Eastridge High School baseball with Sarah Paladick, the activities director.
Good evening, school board members, student cabinet. I am honored and privileged to be here tonight with our Eastridge baseball team. On June twentieth of last year, they competed in the state championship and defeated New Prague, seven to two. And there's, the way the tournament's set up is there's a quarterfinal, semifinal, and then a final game. And we are class four A, so we're the largest school. In each game, the perseverance and the determination from the team was outstanding. They came from behind in every game. Their first game was against Mounds View in the top of the seventh. They rallied to defeat them nine to five. And Mounds View is an SEC school, so we compete against them in our conference. And then the semifinal game was the big game against Stillwater. They were the defending state champions, which took us eight innings. So we got a little bonus, extra inning there, where they defeated them six to five. And then the championship game, they came from behind as well, as I stated, to win. And as I was going back and looking at the pictures in my phone, there was a rain delay that, that evening, because it was actually the night of a school board meeting where we were supposed to be here for spring sports. And I was with the team at the Target Field to, to watch the game. And it was, my last photo I took was eleven fifty-four because of all the rain delays as they were celebrating their championship and taking pictures with the trophy. It was eleven fifty-four that night. So they ended on a high note, and it was phenomenal. The team is led by our head coach, Brian Sprout. If he would like to introduce the players that are here with him tonight.
Sure. If I can remember all their names. We've got a few seniors here, Zach Thompson, and Max Morris, and Blake Ritzer. And then a freshman from last year's team, he's a sophomore now, Weber Niels. So all four participated quite a bit in the state tournament by pitching and producing a lot of offense for us as well, so.
Great.
Any questions for the guys?
Anyway, you can have your luck. Go to the Twins now, too, to help them guys out.
Is anybody planning to play baseball in college?
Yep, all of you. Excellent.
I would like to as well, yes.
Well, congratulations. That's awesome.
Yeah, thanks for coming this season.
Thank you for your time.
Five point oh is public comment. At this time, individuals may speak to the board on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. The board will not respond to or discuss your comments, character abuse, or specific complaints identifying staff, students, or task force members will not be allowed. Our policy allows for three minutes a person. I don't have anyone signed up this evening, but if there's anyone who would like to approach the board. Seeing none, we will move on to our consent items, six point oh. All consent items are considered routine and non-controversial by the board and will be approved by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, but prior to the meeting, board members did have the opportunity to read through them and could have requested that any be moved to an action item. Since we don't have that this evening, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sharon, second by Katie. And part of our consent is the acceptance of gifts, and Ron will help us out with that.
Well, thanks, Tracy. Again, yeah, six point six on our consent agenda items. And we just want to always take the opportunity to thank those generous donors that help every month and with resources for our, our kids here at South Washington County. This last month, we had donations of over fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. And just within two months of our new school year, we are up at, we are now at a hundred and twenty-three thousand, eighty-five dollars. So again, plenty of generosity. And again, at the end of our board meeting, we always show those names. So if you do see those folks in the community, thank them from the board. And I'd be remiss if we didn't also thank people for all the hours they donate that don't show up on a piece of paper. That also goes a long way for our district, and we thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven point oh are workshop items. They will be added to our October ten agenda. Eight point oh, information items. Eight point one, Bob Lawrence, our director of community ed, will join us regarding community ed summer learning.
Good evening, Chair Burnett, Dr. Jacobus, members of the board, and student representatives. As Chair Burnett said, we're going to talk tonight about some of the summer learning opportunities. As you probably know, we don't leave our buildings empty long. So when the kids leave for the school year and teachers are out, we fill them with all sorts of activities, including recreation camps, clinics, enrichment. And tonight, we're going to specifically talk about and share some of the extended learning academic programs that we offer, both through special services and community ed. So I am going to stop talking and introduce Amy Bregman, who is our manager for out-of-school time programs, and she will start off and introduce the rest.
Good evening, and thank you. So, um, let me just find how to forward here. Perfect. So we're here to talk about summer learning. And to do so, I'd like you just to sit back. It was about a month ago or so, we were still in our summer mode, and think about what you might have been doing when you were on your summer vacation. Get a picture in your mind, what pictures might be filling your photo album. That's kind of old school there. It might be your Facebook feed, or your Instagram, or your Snapchat. And as you think of those photos, I want us also to think about the photos that would be filling the albums of our students. What are the things that would be in their photo album from this past summer? And we hope that there are a lot of exciting and interesting activities in those albums. And we also know that some students might have not as many photos in their album. And when that's the case, what can happen is students would suffer from what's known as the summer slide. And the summer slide is when students aren't engaged in summer learning activities. They can lose between two to three months of skills in reading and math. And we're concerned about that for students in our schools, and we want to be doing things so that we're helping students avoid the summer slide. So, we're talking about summer learning, and we hope that as we talk about our programs here, you'll see how in our programs, we're personalizing learning. We are showing how our collaborative efforts are really helping to increase our services and support one another as we're offering vast amounts of summer learning, basically having small schools operating throughout the summer, as well as some really fun reading, math, and social skill learning. And that you'll see how we incorporate research-based best practices so that we could offer the highest-quality programs for our students. So, there are a number of summer learning programs in the summer, and we are going to come and focus in on a few, just to illustrate how summer learning takes place in our schools. And the programs that we're focusing on tonight are special education with extended school year, targeted services, which is the mix for elementary students, and youth force and summer campus for our middle school students. And then from community education, there's, we'll talk about kids club and schooly. And the reason we've chosen to talk about these programs is really because of our collaboration. It illustrates how we work together for efficiency and effectiveness in the summer. So with that, I'm going to introduce Ann Bolseth, who will share some examples of our collaboration.
Hi, thank you so much for your willingness to listen to us talk about these summer programs because not only do we believe in these programs, we know they're the right thing to do for kids. So as I talk tonight, I get to, I get to speak about collaboration. And we're talking about a group of people that are really, really unfamiliar with each other. I worked personally in early childhood, so I don't get that pleasure to always work with Amy, or Kendra, or Jana. So this is an incredible opportunity for me, as a person, to work at extended school year and working at a specific site. So when we talk about collaboration, and what that means, is we look at, sometimes we just think that it has to do with, we show up at the building and everything is going to run absolutely smoothly without a hitch. But we know so much more. So we go in with the attitude that we are going to get this right, and we are going to go and plan. So that was our goal. We started early, we met with the mix, we met with kids club, we met with transportation, we met with all facets, so we could have access for our early childhood, our E S Y, children, that children with special needs could have access to the mix, high-quality programming, that they could get hands-on science, they, they could get before and after care, they could access kids club. So with that, when we look at all of those, we tried to work together to determine what could work for each individual kid on our end, and we paired it with another program who is with the same philosophy. Let's make this work because it's the right thing to do for the kid. So when we have that attitude, we can really make anything happen. And that collaboration was achieved, definitely. Not only that, with facilities, facilities was such a huge important part to what we were doing. Our custodial staff at my site, I was at Cottage Grove L, made it happen. They were really, really great, they helped problem solve, they set up classrooms, they helped move furniture. I know these seem little, but it can really, really disrupt a program. When we look at kids club, we're, we're two different programs at one site, so our schedules can conflict. We have the same shared spaces, but they were willing to work with us. We created great schedules and a really seamless process. So I couldn't be more proud and privileged to have met these individuals and get something that we really feel provided access for our students, as well as we think that benefited theirs. Thank you.
I'm going to talk about some of our programming. So we provide in the summer, high-quality programming, and that produces an increased student academic achievement, positive social-emotional development, regular and consistent school attendance and engagement, positive work and study habits, and stronger relationships between the staff, the students, and the schools, and families. Our programs have a low staff-to-student ratio, about one to fifteen throughout all of our programs. We engage in hands-on curriculum using the science standards from the state that increase the engagement for students. We also have student-focused differentiated programming. We provide a positive culture and climate. All of our programs have morning meeting, which is where you kind of build that, that relationship with the students between each other and the staff. So all of our programs do, do that. We also have well-trained staff. In our special ed program this summer, all of the staff were district staff, so they had been trained throughout the years that they have worked in the school district, except for one person who was then hired in the fall. So that person is now on board with us, which is wonderful. The mixed youth force and summer campus had all returning staff, except for four staff who were district staff. So we have had that experience of years, three, I've been here three summers, working together and creating these programs for the students. And kids club has all-day training that they do before their summer program starts. It's called Summer Institute. They, they cover cognitive discipline, social-emotional learning, LEAP, which is learning through active play, morning meeting, health and safety, and then they have eight learning areas that they also cover, which are STEM, the arts, language and culture, literacy, health and wellness, physical, physical activity, life science, and social-emotional learning. The last thing I'm going to cover is that we provide meals and transportation. This has been essential for families so that they can actually attend our summer programs. We, we work with them, starting in February, getting things all organized, and they create all the routing for us. They are wonderful. This helps us to get students to attend. In the mix, five years ago, we had twenty-five percent of students who had registered for the mix not attend. We're down to nine percent. So we have gained a lot of, the students who are registered are attending now. We've also extended our time because parents said that that is more beneficial for them, so we now run from eight to two, when we went just till noon before. We also provide wraparound care through kids club. Parents can register for that if that is helpful for them, so that they have childcare after or before the mix. And we have healthy meals and snacks that are provided through nutrition services that are through the federal food program. And all of our programs benefit from that in one way or another.
Well, the second time I'm up here, I get to talk about something I'm very passionate about, and that's personalization. But beyond that, what is personalization for a child with special needs? So talking specifically about that, we often think about personalization, we hear it right now, and what it is about the classroom, and how we can personalize within the classroom. Well, when we're talking about child, children with significant special needs, sometimes it's just access to the classroom, getting into that classroom. So when we talk about personalization today, I'm going to tell you a story of what happened during our programming at, in Cottage Grove during E S Y. And I'm going to begin with the first week of E S Y. We were standing, waiting for the buses. The buses are pulling up. We were all excited, the staff was excited to see the kids coming in, they were getting unloading, we were high-fiving, we were greeting them, we were welcoming these students. Kids were going off into their classrooms. All of a sudden, I got a call, hey, Ann, we need you. Walked down to the bus, said, we're, we're having a concern. We have a student, and they're, they're refusing to come off the bus. We have to understand about this child. This child is non-verbal. So beyond that, they didn't have their communication system with them. So the, by the child becoming anxious, we have to recognize that and realize, okay, we can't really, really escalate them because we don't know, we don't have a relationship yet with these children. We're a whole new team to this child. So we have to really, really proceed with caution. But we also know that this bus has to go and pick up the next round of kids to get them to E S Y for middle school. So we're really conscientious about that. But the next thing that happened really, really took my breath away, and that was the bus driver. The bus driver asked me, and she said, you know, I, I picked this kiddo up, and I was talking to mom. And mom said, he loves the bus. It's one of his favorite things in the world. What if I, I drove him around the school one more time and see what that would do? Said, absolutely. The case manager also knew a few things that, she went back to her space and knew that he was really into a certain type of music, and he was really into his snacks. So that gave us time to go access that. I'm standing on the curb, waiting for the bus to go around, and I get a tap on my shoulder. And I turn, and I'm like, okay, I don't know this person. You have a badge on? And she says, hey, I, I work with kids club, and I see that you're having an issue. I asked my, my supervisor, and I asked her if I could go out and help you. I just want you to know, I know that kiddo. I worked with him during the school year, and I really think I can help. Would you be okay with me helping? Absolutely, was my response. Bus pulls up, we go on. As soon as that staff member, who I don't know her name, but I will remember her forever because she saved us that day, from a very, very escalated, or what could have been an escalated decision. What happened was, she walked on, we had the music, we had his snack, with the case manager, who was new to him, and this person that wasn't new, she breathed with him, she used what she knew to do with him. He stood up, walked off the bus with her, they walked into the building, and walked into the classroom, and nothing was done beyond that. No hands-on, it was a calm, conscious decision. But the two heroes in that story are that bus driver, who initiated, saw an issue, she, she engaged with me, and she didn't have to. And someone, that was a bystander, that was willing to help because she knew she could. So I commend those two. And that's, to me, what personalization is for a high-needs student.
So in all of our programs, we're really striving to get to know those students quickly in our programs, particularly in the summer, because we don't have a long time to build those relationships, and those are key for students feeling safe and comfortable in being able to learn. And so we do incorporate some intentional strategies to do that. Our teams we bring together, we collaborate throughout the year to build our climate and culture that's positive and supportive. And then, in the summer, all of our programs have some form of morning meeting, which is really essential to build that school community, so that the students get to know the staff, and students get to know one another, and we can quickly get into the learning of summer. And in addition, then, another way that we're continuing that collaboration is through hands-on academics. And Jana just has a few things to share about some of the curriculum from the mix this summer.
So last summer, we changed our curriculum, and it is not remedial anymore. We use the science standards that are given by the state, and we pick one strand for each grade, because it's sixteen days, so we can't go crazy with all the standards. And that, the, so students who have finished kindergarten, when they come to the mix, will be using the first-grade science standards. So we're looking forward, and we are, we're previewing all of this information, but then using their, the current level that they're at for their reading and math. So we embed that forward-thinking science. And it's, in, in these pictures, there is, the, on the left is a special ed class, and they have built a bridge for the three billy goats scruff, so sort of a STEM activity that they have done. On the right are students who are now fifth graders, and they are making ice cream in Ziploc bags. So they're looking at the different states of matter, liquid, solid, and enjoying ice cream later. Both of these photos are of third-grade students, and they are looking at outer space, so they have created some rockets that they are blasting off, and this other little girl has created her own planet. Our first and second grade students do plant life cycle and the animal life cycle. So they grow plants, and they actually hatch, or the butterflies, I guess it's hatching.
Also, in the summer, we are wild about reading, and we hope you are too, because reading is one of the most important things in helping students retain skills in the summer, regardless of whether it's in literacy and reading or in other subject areas. The one thing we really need to do is make sure students have books in hand. And so we have a program that all of us participate in, and you can too, and maybe you did, I don't know, but where we read and collect our minutes throughout the summer, we're making sure that we're taking books out into the community, either through schooly, through a mobile library, we're making sure we have titles in our programs. And collectively, then, we're gathering those minutes. And this past summer, we read over one million, six hundred thousand minutes of literature this summer. And that was our collective effort. So next summer, we'll be looking to do some more. We're also looking for some celebrities to do some audio and video books for us to put in our video library, too. So if you would like to join us in this wild-about-reading effort, we'd like to have you do so.
So I've got a story about some social-emotional learning. In our summer campus program, which is students going into sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we had a Wicker class for those students, fifth going into sixth grade, to sort of get some skills so they're ready to head on to the big middle school. And there was a student who was in one of those classes, and he was having a really hard time. When they were reading articles, and he was not understanding, he was crying or shutting down, and he was just embarrassed and just feeling bad about himself. And the teacher that was there worked with him and worked on some strategies to calm himself down, so some breathing, of course. And then she did, she taught him to take her, his thumb and pointer finger and pinch here for ten seconds, and just wait and breathe, and then let it go, and then you feel more calm. So they'd been working through this, through the sixteen days, and things were getting a little better as time went on. And on the very last day, he came up to the teacher as they're waiting for the bus, which our program runs out of Park High School, so he's in front of the high school, getting ready to go to middle school. And he gave the teacher a hug and said, thank you for helping me, because I am now going to be ready to go to the middle school, and I know I can do it because of you.
So, I need to take a little pinch and a little breath, because a little touching, right? Right, but that, that's that personalization, and that's the meaning, and that's that connection we're... we're trying to build in the summer, and really support students who need that extra boost for the school year. And another way we do that is through community service. So many of our programs offer community service opportunities. The photos here are from Youth Force. Youth Force runs out of a camp-based model, and this is from the art camp. And they, if you would have seen the community ed trailer there before, I'm hoping you don't recognize it, because it was a really sad and well-worn shade of gold, and they took the art stem, the art class took, and they've done some warm and cool color exploration. They've designed this, and then they painted that, so now we have something joyful to be taking out into the community. Kids Club goes to feed my starving children. Each site also does their own community service project, and so that's helping to build those connections to the community, and kids have that power to make a difference. And then, another thing that we incorporate for reinforcing academics is, we call it LEAP, Learning by Engaging in Active Play. You might know it as action-based learning, and we called it that last summer, and I'm not sure why, because it was not exactly enticing to our little elementary students. They didn't think that sounded like a lot of fun, even though they had fun when they got there. So we called it LEAP this year, and really what that is, is stations where there's active movement combined with some skill reinforcement. So in the picture on the left, there are students, they're bouncing on rebounders, and in front of them, they have the hundreds chart, and they might be doing some skip counting. And they'll be at that station for a few minutes, the music plays, you shift to another station. At the next station, you can see a photo of students, they're in front of a keyboard that's been made on a large tarp. They've got some vocabulary, those words are grade-level specific, and so they take a fly swatter, and they're typing those words out. So those are two examples of what that looks like. The mixed students, the Elementary Targeted Services Program, have this, they run through that like you would run into other specials, like a P E special during the day. And in Kids Club, Schooley brings that out to Kids Club along with the mobile library, so that we are not only getting the academics, but LEAP also incorporates that physical movement, because we're committed to also providing 60 minutes of movement a day. And life skills are critically important, so it's a great time in the summer to support life skills and exploration and building skills. You can see these gals here have done some cake decorating, so who knows, maybe they'll be the next cake boss. And all of this helps our students to build confidence.
Hi, I'm Michelle Dennehy. I was the coordinator at Pike Park High School this summer, and I'm also a special ed teacher at Woodbury High School. And we use a lot of hands-on activities and active learning to support students to improve their confidence in creating connections, and we're purposeful in the beginning stages to build opportunities for students to interact with staff and students they may see the following school year. And I had two students in the autism program who were going to be in the classroom next door to me. So I always came to them, and I said, "Now, remember, my classroom is right next door, and there's a door. Knock on the door, and come see me." And they're like, "Okay, now, you're right next door, right? And I just have to knock on the door?" I said, "Yep, you just come over whenever, just come on in, knock on the door." So the first day, I had this tiny, really, really soft knock, and it got a little louder, and I opened the door, and there are those two students, like, "Oh, your classroom really is right there." So it really, it really helps to bring staff and students together. And then it also brings connections, and I have a story of one of our teachers. At the beginning of E S Y, she said that there was a student who really struggled. He was physically aggressive, ran, yelled, argued with them, everything he asked to do. And the team, the staff of teachers and paras, were able to stay consistent with him each day and encourage the good things he was doing. On the way out of the bus on the last day, he was holding her hand, and he asked his teacher what he thought, what she thought it would be like if he was her kid, and asked if she would come visit him at his school during the school year. And she said this, and she had tears in her eyes. So the connections we build are what allow students to have success throughout the summer.
And so also with our programs, in the past few years, as we've been developing, and as we look forward, we're in a process of continuous improvement. We're proud of where we're at, we're proud of the collaborations. We know from our family surveys, from student data, from our teacher feedback, that we're on the right track, but we also know that we have, still have opportunities, so that we can continue to engage more students. We're hoping to find ways where we can connect with more kids and grow the programs that we have, and also find some other gaps that we might have, so we can fill those as well. So we're in a cycle of this improvement, also that we're serving our kids, so that they have high-quality summer learning activities, and that their photo albums are full of pictures of them being engaged in summer learning. So with that, what questions do you have for us?
What a great presentation. First of all, thank you so much, and for sharing all the personal stories. That makes, we're all crying, crying up here. It's very great. So are all students who are, can all students get in, or do you have waiting, you know, waiting lists, or how does that all work out?
Each program has different ways. For example, Targeted Services, you do need to qualify basic, primarily that's based on test scores. There are 12 graduation incentive codes that a student can qualify by, but it is state funding, and it does require that you qualify for the program. However, in Youth Force, for example, we want, because that middle school is maybe a hard time to keep kids engaged in the summer, because they are independent, and they, you know, might not need it as much, they think. So we're trying to make that program really engaging by having it camp-based, and we also have opportunities. So if you want to, you know, enroll and pay a fee to do that, you can also do it that way. So we're trying to do some blended models. Of course, E S Y, I don't want to speak for them, but to be in E S Y, you have to qualify to. Of course, Kids Club, it's a fee-based childcare program. And then Schooley goes out into the community, and it's free. And we're taking programs out to the community, because sometimes the barrier is just someone who can take you to a program, or it could be a fee, or something else. So we're trying to take programs out into the community and have them free.
And does our Kids Club fill up?
In the summer, we have space. Yep. We actually enroll, take enrollments up to a specific date, and we'll take however many kids we get. And then we have to do staffing, so then we might have to have some wait lists, but we just take as many as are interested up to a certain point.
I just have a comment. I just want to commend you on your programming, it's fantastic. And also, I admire your teachers and their caring attitude towards children, and you can see that they really love working with the kids, so I applaud you. Thank you.
Well, it's a great, I think that's one of the, summer is probably the hardest, because there's so much to bring summer together. There are so many facets of summer programming, and it's my favorite, because we get to spend so much time with kids. And the people who are working with us in the summer, who are there with kids, are very passionate about being there, about building those connections, and you get such a wonderful opportunity to work with really committed people. So I love summer.
Thank you.
So the question I have is with the retention that you talked about, how we've improved from 25% to nine, which is outstanding. Does that include where a student started, and in week two, they declined the program, or is that just from getting them started?
It's technically from getting them started, but in this last summer, I'm trying to think, we had, I think we had 25 students of the 500 that were registered, and mid-session, mid of the 16 days, so.
Because that was going to be my follow-up question, then, what kind of attrition do you see once the program starts? You get in, out of 12 weeks, you know, is it week four, week five? Is there a critical time that we have to get that student passed, so that they'll participate the whole time, then?
Well, we are just there four weeks. I think a lot of it is conversations. So I will get phone calls, and parents will say, "Well, I'm just not really sure," and then I can explain more about the program. When we do attendance every day, if they, if students aren't there, somebody calls home and says, "Hey, we're missing Johnny today. I hope, you know, and then if he's sick or whatever, well, we'll see him tomorrow, that would be great," or, you know, "Oh, he's just not really sure, he's feeling kind of shy about it. Oh, well, we'll talk to the teacher and make sure that they're giving special attention, so that he's feeling more comfortable during math time," or whatever. So I think a lot of it is the staff that Amy is talking about, that they really care and want them there.
That's awesome. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for your amazing work this summer. Thanks for coming to tell us all about it. I'm just going to let pass around some wild-about-reading buttons, if you'd like to take one, you may. Eight point two, our Director of Finance and Operations, Dan Pyon, will join us for our long-range facility planning update.
Good evening, Chair Burnett, members of school board, student members of the board, Dr. Jakovas. Tonight, I'm here to give you an update on our long-range facility planning process. I did, I suppose you might have noticed last night that the Twins won their central division, at least so far, and it was pretty exciting, and reminded me of back when, last time they were in the World Series, it was 1991. And I was reading the paper back then, and saw this ad. Back then, we didn't, all we had were newspapers, we didn't have any electronic stuff. And there was an ad, and it said, "Please help. I won tickets in the ticket lottery for game six of the World Series. However, it's my wedding day, and I need someone to replace me." So I called the number, and he said, "Well, that's great." I said, "I could, I could help you out." He goes, "Well, that's great. The address is 950 Vine Street, St. Mary's Church. Her name is Donna, she'll be the one in the white dress." I'll give you a little history, because you know the history, but I wanted everybody to hear the history over and over again. Back in the fall of 2015, the school board had authorized to go have an election for three questions. One was for an operating levy, one was to build a new middle school, to remodel some of the existing middle, all the other existing middle schools, and to convert one of the older middle schools, open into a new Avis Fronteras Elementary School. And then there was a third question, and that question was for $96.5 million. There was a third question for about $38 million bond, and that was to expand the three high schools and to add some other things, and mainly importantly, to add restrooms to some of the old prototype elementary schools that do not have enough restroom space. Well, you may remember that the first question levy passed, and the second question, the $96.5 million bond passed by eight votes, and the third question did not pass. So we went ahead, and we built the school, beautiful new school. We've converted the elementary into a beautiful, the old middle school into a beautiful elementary But we knew that we still had the other needs, and just because it didn't pass, didn't mean the needs didn't go away. We still have more kids coming in than we have room for, and those little kids still need to go to the bathroom. Not the same ones, new ones, though. Hopefully, the other ones have gone on to middle school now. So we put together a long-range facility planning process, and we've started that process. We formulated two groups. One is the Long Range Facility Planning Steering Committee, and that's made up of district department heads and some advisors. Mike Vogel, who used to do all our planning here as an advisor, as well as some contractors that give us good numbers and design ideas and things like that. And then we also formulated the Long Range Facility Planning Task Force, which is made up of committee members, community members, and also steering committee members. And we've had a few meetings, you go to the meetings, my heart is filled when I see so many community members that really, really want to help, and their hearts are always in the right places, and it's great to see them all show up for these meetings. So so far, we've had five, we've met five times with the steering committee, and we met three times with the task force. And the task force meetings mainly have been to lay the foundation down. First, we went over the demographic reports. We hired a demographer, and we'll talk a little bit about those numbers when we're done here. And the demographer presented the numbers in much more detail than I'll give you, and how they put together the numbers and how they came out. That's the foundation of the space issue. And then we also went over a needs assessment with the task force, because we went through and interviewed all the principals and department heads, and put together a bunch of, a needs assessment of what else needs to be done across the buildings in the district. So that's where we're at right now. We've met three times, we've laid the foundation, we've talked about the needs, we've had them prioritize needs, and next meeting, we're going to have some representatives from the city of Woodbury and the city of Cottage Grove to give presentations, or at least update the task force on where they see the city going growth-wise, both cities. And then we'll also start beginning to look at options. Those options will come from the steering committee, as the design team will start throwing some ideas out to them. In the meantime, I just wanted to talk a little bit about what the numbers look like at this point. So in this chart, it's fairly self-explanatory, but I do need to point out something. So we got the capacity on the far left, that's the current capacity, in those schools' current roles. And when I say that, I mean, we do have those schools, mostly in the elementaries, but all the schools have different spaces for special needs, special services, and then, so we're continuing to use them in those areas. And then also, as we look at the elementary schools, we look at what, we're assuming we're still going to use the same rooms for preschool that they use now. And then we have the 1920, that's the enrollment we had about last week, so far, a number of bodies we have in the buildings. And then the five-year enrollment number is our peak in the next five years. And the way it's going now, this peak would be at the five-year mark. Then the 10-year mark is the peak in the next 10 years, but that peak could probably hit any time between the sixth and 10th year. So this one, this won't be enrollment exactly in the 10th year, because it'll peak out a little bit earlier on some of the elementary. So these are peak numbers. And they're really there just for you to see. East Ridge looks like that capacity of 1,800, that, you know, they're going to be 500 over in five years, and 1,100 over in 10 years. When I talked about the part that didn't pass, the plan for the high school was to add 500 seats to East Ridge, was to add 300 seats to Librae High School, and 200 seats to Park. And that would have made each of the high schools at 2,300 capacity. Librae High School is looking at a capacity right now of 2,026, and five years, they're going to be about 2,400, and then 10 years, about 2,700. Park High School is a capacity of 2,167. Looks like in five years, they'll still be okay, but then in the 10-year, it'll be a little higher. And you can, you can look through them all and see, and it looks like Oldman Middle School is going to be over capacity, and that was always built that way. It's built to add 200 more, we're ready to add those on there. And then Librae Middle School, and then the other two middle schools. And then if you look at the elementaries, and really, the order of these elementaries isn't so much the size, it's really the pressure points of capacity. So really, Bailey, Pine Hill, Gray Cloud are looking at being over capacity by significant amounts. And then Red Rocks, a little bit, is another one that's kind of pushing it, I'm sorry, those, I should have said Red Rocks, always been one we're worried about being an issue. And then, of course, Royal Oaks is okay, and the other ones are pretty close. Then the other elementary schools, they're coming in a little bit better. Then the other elementary schools, they're coming a little bit better compared to capacity. And then in total, just for your reference, you can see that right now, the capacity for all our elementary schools together is 10,115. Our capacity for all our secondary schools together is 10,947. So, we have a total capacity of about 21,062. In total, you can see right now at 1,840 or so that we're in pretty good shape, but in five years, we're already over capacity district-wide. And then in 10 years, and most of it, as you can see, is in the secondary side of it. So, these are the things we're working with and working on as we come up with plans. But I just wanted to give you an update tonight about our progress right now. And we will be meeting soon in October with the task force, and the steering committee will usually meet a week before the task force does. Any questions?
This is a great one-pager, Dan, and I just feel like we really got to be sure to get this in front of, you know, having got on the development tour in front of the city and county officials to understand the impact those developments are. I mean, just to start that, to keep that conversation going. So, this is, I would email this tomorrow to everyone who went on the development, because that's, it's really laid out very nicely. So, that's great. And then just for the record, the 96 million in 2015, we won by 18 votes, but we had a recount, and we went to court on New Year's Eve Day and won by five votes. So, just to get the record straight on that. Thank you.
I was a recount judge.
So, voting is important.
So, maybe just for the community, when we have these constraints and we have to put up a new brick-and-mortar school, what's the building timeline normally take, Dan?
We start with the toughest one, and we're using a two-and-a-half to three-year on a high school. It's a pain in the ass, assuming we can get the bids out, if we did, say, an election in February of a year. By the time we get the bids out, everything bid out, and you get through a summer, we usually think about the second fall after the election for a high school. I think we could do an elementary school in a year and a half. It'd be about a year less to do an elementary school. And we got the Oleman Middle School done in about that timeframe.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's important for folks to understand, when you look at these numbers, and five years seems like kind of a long way away, but when you start talking about having to build a building, five years is not that far away then to meet those space needs. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks for the update. All right. Eight point three is our negotiations update, and Katie Schwartz will give us that report tonight.
South Washington County Schools is committed to providing regular updates for the collective bargaining agreement negotiations with the United Teachers of South Washington County. The district and UTSWC share a common interest, the success of all students, and we are committed to working together to reach an agreement that will benefit our students and those who contribute to their success. Negotiation committee members from District 833 and UTSWC met on September 17, 2019. UTSWC presented a counterproposal from the district negotiating committee that was presented to UTSWC during the previous session. District negotiation committee members then caucused and presented a proposal to negotiation committee members from UTSWC. Both negotiation committees have agreed to hold an extended negotiation session on October 3, 2019, with the hopes that with more time together, a tentative agreement can be reached. Negotiations between both committees continue to progress positively, and both sides have stated they are committed to coming to an agreement in the near future. An update on the October 3 meeting will be reported at the October 10 School Board meeting. The district will also continue to provide regular updates as the negotiation discussions proceed on our website at www.sowashco.org under the School Board section.
Thank you. Nine point O, discussion items, we don't have any this evening. Ten point O, our action items. Ten point one is the approval of our preliminary levy, and our Director of Finance and Operations, Dan Pyen, will join us one more time. Well, actually, two more times.
Good evening, back again. So, we're coming upon, it's kind of our financial time of year when we have to get things approved and get things ready for the next school year, the next tax year. As you remember, we're always working on three different budgets. We're always working on, obviously, the current financial year, what's going on in the budget, things like that. We have to plan for the next one, because we have to put in levies for another year out, and then we're always auditing the year before. This is part of the next year's budget. These numbers won't be reflected in the revenue until 2021. But every fall, according to the Truth on Taxation statutes, school districts must certify to the county auditor the proposed certified levy for taxes payable in 2020. We have to do that by September 30 of 2019. So, what I've included in the packet is a summary of the levies, of what you would be putting in for a levy, and then I also included in the packet the actual levy document that we work off of. It's about 40 pages long. It looks like this. We go through every line at workshops, and then we make different adjustments to the lines and make sure that things, make sure we can levy for everything we can levy for. So, I'll just go over a few of what some of the things we levy for. You might remember that our levy is, we levy in the general fund about $50 million, well, actually, this year, it's $62 million, and our general fund revenue is about $240 million. So, it's about a quarter of your revenue. So, if you look on the, if you look in the packet on the summary sheet of the levies, we levy for referendums and local optional revenue. Those are things that have been approved by the voters, and that's for money we can use for operations. And then we have the levy for, we levy for the Q-COMP system. It's a combination of aid, and that's to pay the ATPPS system, the teachers, in a special program. It's very helpful. On this sheet, we have $1.8 million, but I will recommend in December to do an under levy, down to $1.5 million, because we just have to do it to what we need for budget, so that should lower the levy. Otherwise, things that are kinda highlighted, that we highlighted with some of the other committees, lease levy, there's a $4 million lease levy in there, about $2.7 million is for the school district, and the other 1 million is for the intermediate school district. And things we use that for is to rent instructional space, mostly for specialized services and programs, and then also to lease things like ice arenas, and then also some land leases, and to make some purchases of buildings. Launch facility maintenance levy is about $6 million. Capital projects levy was approved by the voters, is $2.3 million. Ones that have gone up, it shows that ATPPS is going up, but it won't, because we'll recommend to lower that down. Achievement integration went up in double digits, but mainly because we had more pupil units, so we gave a little more money there. Otherwise, unless there's anything you really have any questions on, that's the way it looks. If you look on the bottom, you can see that our taxable market value, our referendum market value, and our tax capacity, all gone up seven and a half percent or higher, and that's, and that's helpful to the levy, because that spreads the tax dollars out a little better. And you can even see new construction. Of last year was $220 million, this year it's $268 million. So, I mean, that's, that's a 21% increase in new construction alone. So, as we ask you to approve, I'll ask you to approve a max levy, so that if we have to, we can always go down, but we can't go up, and we'll have the final numbers for you in December, after all adjustments are made. Even with the max levy, I mean, the good news is, as we ran the numbers, that with the projected growth projected by the county, that we should see about a three-and-a-half percent decrease in most all the property taxes for the school district, if your property value doesn't go up. So, property value going up will raise the taxes, but if your value stayed the same, someone with a $250,000 house would see about a $60 decrease in their taxes. Someone with a $400,000 property would see a decrease of about $100. Commercial property of $2 million would see a decrease of about $485. And that's all based, that's mainly just because of the growth. You're raising the levy about 4%, but the growth in your, in your market value and your tax base is so much higher. So, this is one of the first years, one of the first times recently that we actually saw the growth outpace the proposed levy. So, I think that's good news. What I asked for tonight is, if you have any questions, I asked for a motion to approve the preliminary levy, certify the preliminary levy at the max amount.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions?
I had one, and I kinda forgot it. I guess it's with the property values, it's more of a comment. You know, when Dan throws a number out there, I just don't want people to be misled in thinking their taxes are going down, because again, it always gets down to what neighborhood you live in, too. You know, one neighborhood, you might see a, maybe a 10% decrease, and another neighborhood might see an increase. And that's just based on how the values are done, and I always like to remind people that the school district does not value the houses, that's the county auditor. So, when those statements come out, you know, in the fall or in the spring, I forget when we got our latest ones, that's when you have the opportunity to talk to the county auditors, and that can certainly help with how your taxes are based, not only for the school district, but also for your city and your county taxes, too. So, you know, Dan, I appreciate the work you've done here and bringing it forward, and I think it's prudent to go at the max, knowing that in December, we can always lower it, but I think in height, you cannot, you can't come in with a lower budget and raise it. So, that's the reason, really, we want to, and I'll support this levy tonight.
Yeah, and I know I just got something in the mail from the city of Cottage Grove, and I thought they said they had approved a 7.7 increase, so, a lot of factors in your property taxes, so. All right, anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of approving our preliminary levy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten point two is the approval of our workers' comp insurance renewal.
I just left my stuff back there, so I could actually go.
Get a few extra steps.
I didn't wanna just stand here all night. Good evening again, Chair Burnett, members of the School Board, Dr. Jakobus, and student members. Tonight, I'm just bringing you a real simple proposal. We like to bring it out there so that people are aware of some of the larger expenses we have, and then also, the insurance company feels a lot better if the board approves any new renewals of things, especially something as large. So, this is our workers' compensation insurance, and the premium is running $1,099, almost $1.1 million. It's important to know that we've kept our mod rate pretty low, and we've done really well, and that seems like a large premium, and it is, but if you look on the back, or I guess, in your iPads, you know, the second page, you can see since 1415, we had an annual payroll of 120, so your work comp is all based on, the rates are based on your payroll. We had an annual payroll of 124 million, in 1920, we have an average payroll of 157 million. But our premiums are only $20,000 more than they were back in 1415. You can see they went down for a while, and they're coming up a little. And you can kinda tell why if you look at that experience mod column, and that's, you know, that depends on how you do. I mean, the less claims you have, the lower your mod's gonna be. Anytime you can keep it under 1, that's good. It'd be nice to have it around .9 or so. And the Human Resources Department, led by Teresa Lenars, in this category, has done a great job of executing the work comp program and making sure that, you know, when something does happen, that it gets properly reported, but not only that, when something does happen, we make steps so it doesn't happen again, that we do education, that we make sure that employees that are out, you know, we get them back to work as soon as we can, if they can, things like that. Those things all help to lower our premiums. So, although a million dollars is a lot, it could be a lot worse with the size of our payroll. And in fact, you know, we did so well in 17 and 18 that we did receive a check for $55,000 on a retention refund, and I know the insurance guy came by and was giving me a hard time because I didn't tell Teresa about it, and I just told him, I said, "Well, it has to be higher than that for me to bring that up." But they do a great job, and we're just asking you to approve. I asked for any questions, but I asked for you, a motion just to approve the renewal of our work comp insurance with SFM, our agent is Marsh McLennan.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second. It's moved by Sharon and second by Katie. Any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven point O, our reports and comments. Eleven point one is our superintendent's report.
Thanks. I'll try to keep this short, because as you know, the division-leading Packers are playing, and I know you wanna get home, support them, so they can continue their job in the division.
Cut him off. Sorry.
Anyways.
Your report is not happening.
I wanna summarize and read from an email that went out to all users, but it's about our Spark program, and to let the public know where we have gone with Spark. If you remember, last year, we initiated a crowdsourcing innovation program where we asked all of our employees in the district to submit ideas on suggested improvements, things that might help in their own area of responsibilities or for the entire district. And we categorized the ideas that were submitted as big ideas based on basically how expensive they might be and how extensive they would affect the district. And so, there was big, medium, and large, there wasn't a scientific cutoff for that. So, the first phase was the idea phase. The second phase was a voting phase where staff members voted for their favorite ideas. And part of the favorite and understanding it was how the idea was presented, and then colleagues could vote. The top idea in each category then moved to the third phase, which was bringing together a team of staff members who were trained in human-centered design to do a design thinking process to see how we might implement these ideas. So, last year, the idea that was supported in the big idea area was addressing growing mental health needs. And I think you remember, as we did our listening sessions last year, that was also a major concern for the staff. And through the design process, the designers took time to identify priority actions our district could take to help curb the impact of mental health issues on students and staff. The priority actions ranged from small ideas that we could easily implement to restructuring supports for students and staff across the district. There were multiple, a multitude of recommendations put forward, but ultimately, it was determined the best place to start would be to hire a point person to help coordinate the efforts to support the mental health needs. Fortunately, the state this year was in the funding formula. They had allotted more safety dollars for us, and safety dollars can be used for physical safety and different elements, but also to support counselors, social workers, and mental health. And so, we are, we just posted a new position that will be a person that will be dedicated toward looking at coordinating our efforts to support the mental health needs in the district, and then growing a program. What I envision is that would be a department as the years go on, because of the number of great supports, proactive things that we could do. So, I'm really excited about that. The medium idea was to restructure parent-teacher conferences, and the team that worked on that came up with a prototype on how we might communicate student learning by replacing traditional conferences with more of a curriculum night and some more personalized traditional conferences with more of a curriculum night and some more personalized communication. And what they had hoped is that a school would pilot that. However, the solution as developed has some elements that would need to, need more time in problem solving to align with our current teacher's contract, but we're hoping that a school will be piloting that, the, the elements and then working through the potential issues if this looks like a solution that could be implemented fully. So, I'm really excited about that because again, second idea that can come to fruition. And the third idea was about converting documents to work, working electronic documents. We have a lot of PDF documents, different documents that, that if we could put them right into word processing and we could use them in different ways, that would be more effective for us. So, Bob Berkowitz and his team have worked to look at, at a solution and we do have the ability to scan and convert documents with our, our current printers, but there's also some software that we're looking at and we developed from the design team, the, the tech department put together a document on how to do this. Now, we are looking at some upgrades and we'll update that document, but that's the third idea that will be implemented. So, I want to publicly again, thank everyone who submitted ideas. We'll be relaunching Spark in October again and we hope to do this on a regular basis, but I think it's really important for our employees and the community to know that their voice makes a difference. Every idea that surfaced from the crowd will, will be able to be implemented in one form or another and, and almost exactly as the teams, the design thinking teams brought forward. So, we're excited about Spark and we think it's just a wonderful program for us in the school district.
Thank you. Eleven point two are our student school board representative reports and tonight we'll start with our Woodbury High School Representative, Maya.
Okay. Cool. So, at Woodbury, we've had a good start to the school year. Over the summer, we had a bunch of renovations happen in the school, the biggest of which being the band room was renovated, which as someone who's in orchestra, I'm able to appreciate like how cool that is and how much of a difference it truly makes to have the acoustics completely different and the practice rooms are like truly soundproof now. Next summer, we're also doing that renovation to the orchestra and choir rooms and so everyone's just excited for that to happen and for our music department to be up to that level. We're also hosting the SEC like Music Fest later this year and so it'll be cool to like have the cool room. Other than that, we had like new auditorium chairs, a new varsity gym floor. Just this past week, they painted some pillars blue. It's just cool to see what they've been doing with the building. The biggest change however, that's happened this year is that each student at Woodbury has been issued, excuse me, has been issued their own personal Chromebook. And so, it's been interesting to see how teachers have implemented that technology in the classroom. The biggest change I've seen is just doing more things online, obviously. We've taken a few tests online and quizzes and that's actually been pretty convenient because you get your scores back immediately and so there's not that waiting time, what did I get? And so, it's been nice to just immediately know. Clubs are in the process of recruiting members. People are going to classes and giving their spiel's about join this club. A lot of focus on recruiting freshmen has been going on. Our football team is in their season. We play Creighton on Friday. The theme is Jersey. Everyone's excited. It's a home game. Our boys varsity soccer team is also doing really well this year. We've only lost one game and so we're hoping that continues. And our musical has started rehearsals. This fall, we're doing the Addams Family and so we're also very looking forward to that.
All right. From Eastridge, Hannah.
Okay. So, this year is Eastridge like 10-year anniversary because we're technically going into our 11th year, but we're doing our 10-year celebration and we did that hand in hand with homecoming and it was so much fun because we did, we started the week off with Powderpuff on Sunday and it was, it was actually a really big event and it was very, it's always very, the girls get really, really into it and it's really fun. And then we had our pep fest and it went so well this year and everyone had so much fun. And then we had our parade, which we moved back to our starting point being at Lake, which made it so much bigger and we had so much more involvement and so many more people turn out, which was just like a really cool thing to see the community come out and support the students and what they've been doing at Eastridge outside of academics. And then we had our game and we won 43 to 14 against Roseville, which was super fun. It's always the most fun thing ever to win your homecoming game. It's just so much school pride. And then we like Woodbury got our Chromebooks and it's a process to integrate them because at Eastridge, a lot of students already have computers, so it's like very difficult to make that transition for a lot of students. So, hopefully it gets better. And then we also integrate, we're starting a new cellphone policy and it's been really cool actually to watch our administration be like, okay, so here's the policy. And then they've actually been working a lot with a lot of our students to be like, okay, you want this, so how about we do this? And so, we've been changing a little bit so that everybody is happy and they're doing a really, really good job of like listening to students and I think that that's really strengthening the bond between the administration and students, which is really good to see. And we also started our fall musical. We started rehearsals a couple of weeks ago for the Drowsy Chaperone, which is kind of unique. It'll be interesting to see. And our NHS blood drive is coming up and we have our student recognition night, which I believe is next week as well. Should be super fun.
And we have Tracy joining us from Park.
Hi. Okay, so, we started the year amazing at Park with our new principal, Mr. Herbert. He's really chill and really nice. He's been really helpful with all the new rules he has set in place. He's been helpful with the teachers and also the teachers have been amazing with like enforcing them, but like in a more nicer way. Like last year, it was kind of more like, more lenient where the point where it's like, it seemed like they didn't care, but this year they definitely do care and it's showing off in the students with better attitudes and better grades and stuff. We also have a new Facebook page, so you should go follow that and like that. We made it because we figured that more adults use Facebook, so that'd be easier for them to get in touch and we're doing things like posting student recognition on it a lot and all the new updates and stuff. So, if you're a Park parent, go follow that. Also, we have this new Pride Park wall on like, you walk in and you can just see it. It's all the ICC values. So, we have this theme. We go by ICC, integrity, commitment, compassion. And you can earn slips by, from teachers and stuff, just like little stuff they recognize and like they think is important. And the ones that stand out to the administration, like the principals, they put it up on this wall and your name's kind of on it and it's just taped there for everyone to see. And I think that was really cool because it's really sweet. Last week, we had a MONG informational meeting. So, basically, if you were just kind of interested in their kind of culture and like more for parents who have MONG kids who go there, to come and learn about the school a little more. And we had almost 60 people show up, so it was really nice and there was food and stuff provided. Our staff team is kind of going crazy. We got a new, a bunch of new recruits and they have an upcoming performance, the Quality Alliance, on the 25th of October. And our teams are kind of just doing their thing, you know, showing Park pride.
Thank you so much.
Hey Tracy, can I, Hannah, you spurred my memory. Thank you for this. I was, this last week, I was cleaning my office, digging through some old files and with Eastridge's 10-year anniversary, this is what I found in my file. This was the original brochure that was handed out on the day we did the dedication. It has the agenda of what we did that day and pictures and everything, so why don't I turn it over to Dr. Jacobus and yourself and you guys, you can arm wrestle to see who wants to keep it. If this, I don't know of the school if they have one of those in their archive or we do. I just happened to stumble on it and I thought I'd bring it to the meeting tonight, so it was kind of cool to find it.
I know I still have my hard hat.
I still have my shovel from that too, so it was an incredible day when we first turned the dirt at Eastridge and now to think that was 10 years ago, it's, it's crazy how fast it's went. So, I figured you might enjoy seeing what it would look like.
Oh yeah, also, there's no new information on the iPads. I know you guys like to hear about that.
All right. Thank you. All right. 12.0, future meeting dates, October 10 is a regular board meeting and October 24th. And with that, we are adjourned. You may.